Welcome to the last planning meeting of September seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you. I'll start again. Welcome to the last planning meeting in September seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four. Is that working? Welcome to the last planning meeting of September seventeen, two thousand and four. A special meeting to the staff of the library. And could we please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell, present. Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Vice Chair Swisher, present. Town Chair Thomas.
Present. So I'm going to go straight into the pocket portion of the meeting tonight. And we're here to discuss the design review rating permit and fence side exception to the new Larkspur Library on Ten Rose Lane. And I'm going to pass it over to staff to make their presentation.
Thank you. I am actually going to introduce Dan Schwartz, the city manager, and now for last few comments before we get started. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. I'm going to stand up in part because I'm more comfortable out there and in part because I'm just so excited to be here. I'm Dan Schwartz, the city manager. I see a lot of familiar faces out there. And I think that's because a lot of you have been on the same journey I've been on for more than a decade to be here today in this room to take what's a milestone set in building our new Larkspur Library. I've been here a while and there were times when I wasn't sure what was going to happen if we're going to pull this off. But here we are in the precipice. And for those who don't know this, this started with a committee that developed a master plan for the property. That was in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen. We've been at it ever since. But I know there's people in the room, I saw Phil Terry come in. I think I met Phil my fifth day in Larkspur. And he's been working on this since, I think, nineteen seventy something. It's not earlier than that.
It's been a great trip down.
Yeah, we're finally here. We're finally here. You know, there's others in the room that have been at this far longer than me. So I just want to sort of set the table that this particular iteration of the upper really started in twenty eighteen. And that's when a group of citizens came to the city and said, we can help you make this happen. We realize that you need some grassroots energy. And that's when the version of the partner for the city that Miano is a Commons Foundation really came into. And we were talking about this before the meeting, that architects are here tonight. It's really remarkable when you sit in a room and say, your partner not only did what they said they were going to do, they did more than they thought they could do. And they're still raising money because there's still more that we can get done. And that's just really remarkable. And then I want to acknowledge, and just to speak in a little bit, Julian Skinner, our public works director. He and our former library director, Frank Nescaveto, put together an amazing grant proposal. And I've done a lot of grants in my years. I've never submitted one where I was certain we had no shot because I had looked at the scoring criteria and then he came back with a five point two million dollar award. It was, I think, the seventh highest award. And that's a testament to a lot of hard work that the staff put in to convince the argument that would stay. And then this specific meeting today to do the design review for this building, it really represents the culmination of the last few years and several dozen meetings between the advocate with the council, the Commons Foundation, stakeholder groups. I see some of the stakeholders who were represented in the room as well to discuss what the library needs to be, what the challenges are. As we go through the discussions tonight, bear in mind that one of the things that the council and the staff have had to navigate, there's a lot of competing interests when you build a public building. There's a lot of things we're trying to get done with this building. It's not just going to be a library. It's going to be a place you can build clean air in a wildfire situation. It's going to be a warming and cooling center. It's going to be a resiliency center. All those needs are built into this plan. And a really exciting aspect of what this new amenity of our community is going to be. This is a generational opportunity and we're really excited to present it to you this evening. I'm going to let Julian talk a little bit about the specifics of this project and what's happened since last December when we awarded the contract to do the design bit. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm Julian Skinner, I'm the city's public works director. So I just wanted to give a little bit of context on how we arrived here tonight in the city process that we undertook after the city manager mentioned, we were able to secure the over five million dollars in grant and then the five million dollar donation from the Commons Foundation. We were able to move this project forward in October of two thousand and twenty-two. The council added the new library project into the capital improvement program. We started looking forward to implementing the new library. Around that time, we also identified that one of the funding restrictions on the grant was that we could not build a bigger library than we have today. So quite a lot is why isn't the library bigger? But there was a funding restriction on the grant that wouldn't allow us to build a bigger library. So we looked to add some community space to the library while we're doing the building to add some space that the library reflects into or that the community could use. And then we started looking at the funding we had and the time restrictions on the grant. It has a very fixed end deadline by March of twenty-six. We have to spend all of the money. And so we engaged Ketchell to have a look at the funding and the project timeline. It will help us put this project forward. And we landed on a, on a design build process, which is a little different than a lot of typical projects, which are your traditional delivery method is you hire an architect, the architect does the design, and then you go out to bid and then you hire whoever the low contractor is that submits a bid. The reason we chose design bid, sorry, design build for this process is too bold. One is mainly we have a fixed budget with the grant amount. And in early twenty-three, when we were looking at this process, we were experiencing some really abnormal inflation. And so we didn't want to go through a process where we spent all of this time coming up with the design and go out to bid and all of a sudden the bid comes in way above our project funding. That would have required us to go back and do a redesign and go out to bid. And in that case, our funding deadline would have been in jeopardy. And in addition, the design build process shrinks your overall project timeline because you hire the architect and the contractor at the same time. So they're working together on a project from the beginning all the way through the design of the construction. So it allows you overall to shrink your project timetable. So for those two reasons, we moved forward with a design build process. At two steps, we did a request for qualifications. So we went out to the community and explained the project and got statements of qualifications back in from teams that are architects and contractors. We selected the top three and then asked them for a proposal. And we were able, because we're doing design build, we said we have X amount of dollars to build the library and we want it to be six thousand eight hundred and forty-five square feet. We'd also like some community space in here. Show us what we can get for that money. And so all those three teams, the team of Alton and Nolan Tam were selected as the best of those three proposals. And so in December of twenty-three, we went before the council and asked them for permission to negotiate a contract with Nolan Tam. And we did so. And then in February of this year, we came forward to council and we did some budget amendments to fully fund the project. And then the design build team have worked from that point moving forward. We had some stakeholder groups with three of the library groups, so the Friends, the Board and the Foundation, the Road Lane HOA, and also the Commons Foundation, where we got some feedback on Nolan Tam's proposal. And then we've been working on those plans moving forward to a point where we're able to put a package together for the design review. The other thing I'll mention about the way we structured this with the design build contract is there are some alternatives that are built in that we have proposals from the contractor that as we move down the road and we identify what all the final funding parameters are that we can evaluate whether we can pull those components into the project or not. And so some of those components that are additional or enhancements are also some of the questions that we've received from this proposal tonight, specifically sustainability, solar panels, landscaping or questions that we've heard. These are identified as enhancements in the design build package. And so what we plan to do is after we receive the design approval, we will be going to the city council. And then the next step is to present to city council the final plans with the budget and then the list of those enhancements and get direction from the city council on which of those they would like to incorporate into the project. And as of right now, that's scheduled for the first city council meeting in August, that follow-up meeting. So that's a little brief summary on how we landed here today. Turn it over to Alex for the staff presentation.
Thank you. May I share my screen here?
Sorry, Julian, did you mean to say October? The city council, the city council. I did.
Hey, so good evening commissioners. We item for you this evening is eleven twenty-four at zero thirty-seven. See on the screen there, that's the overview of the site. I'm sure we're all familiar with it. It's currently vacant, approximately two and a half acre reversal. And it has been founded the lucky shopping center, there was current subdivisions, hall, middle school across the street. I know we've kind of covered this, but I did want to briefly touch on the history of the project. This has been quite a lot of work, but then there's a big community and staff. There is a more in-depth history in the staff report, but these are the highlights. The nineteen ninety-four general plan included action program twenty-two, which called for a specific plan should the use of the nursery site change. In two thousand and six, the city adopted the central Larkspur area specific plan, which includes a number of parcels along Doherty Drive. The subject parcel was included as sub-area three and which planned for residential civic uses. In two thousand and twelve, the city council created the library and recreation community planning committee, which worked to create the community facilities parcel master plan, which is adopted in two thousand and thirteen along with an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. In two thousand and fifteen, the city council created the community character subcommittee, which held a number of town hall meetings to discuss what the community wanted out of a library and community facility. In two thousand and eighteen, the city partnered with the Commons Foundation and worked towards a shared goal of fundraising for a library, along with a state grant, the Commons Foundation and the city, and each approximately five million dollars to fund the library and the communities in that project. And more recently, as we just heard, the city issued an RFQ for design build firms in two thousand and twenty-three for selecting multi-construction and Nolan Tam architects. And in August of this year, the design build team officially applied for entitlements. So the entitlements requested this evening, our design review, rating permit and fence side exception. And these will allow entitled the creation of a new eight thousand nine hundred and seventy square foot library and community facility. The proposed library will be oriented toward Doherty Drive with parking behind it, access via West Rose Lane. And parking lot will contain thirty-two spaces and it's shaped to allow for emergency vehicle access. Here's the floor plan. The library will occupy the western portion of the building. And the community space will occupy the eastern portion. And the community space will be approximately twenty-one hundred square feet and contains a number of meeting rooms and work slash storage spaces for staff. And the library itself contains reading areas, study rooms, children and teens spaces, book stacks and public computer stations. Here are the elevations. The north elevation is what you can see from Doherty Drive. The south elevation would be the view from the parking lot. The community facility in that area will be a flat roof portion of the building with the library space occupying the rest structure. And the west elevation, which is on the left there, is what you can see from those lane. And the east would be the view from the residences immediately east of the property. The project proposes over one thousand cubic yards of grading, which requires a grading permit. And generally, these permits are issued by the public works director. However, the municipal code does require planning commission approval for a grading permit that the amount of work exceeds five thousand cubic yards. The findings for the grading permit require the planning commission to determine that the work can be done safely and does not threaten life, land or the conservation of natural beauty. The geotechnical report was prepared, which found the work can be done safely and includes recommendations and best practices for the project. And condition of approval number four requires compliance with those recommendations. Lastly, the project proposes an eight-foot fence along the eastern property line, which is highlighted in orange there. The fence will replace an existing six-foot fence in the same location. It's designed to increase privacy and reduce noise transmission for those residences immediately adjacent to the parcel. You have received a number of public comments, I believe there was twenty in total. Many in general support, but looking for additional assurances on things like the library book locker location, intersections to remain operating during construction and inclusion of additional sustainability measures. There were three comments in general opposition citing the design of the structure and site grading that needs to occur. As mentioned earlier, the city adopted a mitigated negative declarations a part of adopting the community facilities parcel master plan. The MND analyzed the potential for impacts of a future library and community facility on the parcel and concluded that the project would not result in a significant negative environmental impact. The document also included four mitigation measures, which had been included in the conditions of approval of this project. Under sequel section one five one six two, subsequent DIRs and mitigated negative declarations shall not be prepared unless there are substantial changes to the project, a substantial increase in the severity of a previously identified substantial effect or new information, which could not have been known at the time of adoption, shows that there is a new substantial effect. Staff has not made any of the findings above and has determined that the project is exempt from further analysis under section one five one six two. The attached resolution also includes staff's findings. In conclusion, staff arguments that the planning commission reviewed the project, take a public comment and make the following motions. First, define the project exempt from further sequel analysis under section one five one six two. And second, to approve the project subject to findings and conditions of approval. This concludes my staff report. I'm available for questions in the project team this year as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. And thank you, staff, for that very informative presentation. So we can now ask questions?
If you have questions for me, otherwise we can have the applicant team come and present and ask questions after that.
You know, let's do that. Let's have the applicant team present.
Good evening. I'm Chris Noel with Nolan Tam Architects, sort of principal in charge of the design part of this. And I can't tell you how excited and glad we are to be here. This has been a long time coming, this project. And we've been tracking it all the way over, feels like, you know, many, many years. And it's really, I really like to be here to be able to kind of see this project through to its fruition. I'm joined by a number of our key team members. Eric Andreessen of Public Construction is our fearless team leader. Next to him is Tom Beal, our project manager, architect project manager. And we have two of our landscape architects, Nathan and Quinn from RHA, landscape architects of Hill Valley. So we are here to sort of basically sort of show you the project and walk through. It was, as Julian very explained very well, this is a design build project, which is a really different process. And so he, one of the things about this is that the design process is based upon, you know, sort of not our usual one that we do for libraries. Nolan Tam, we do, I've done a lot of library designs and they're all based upon very deep community involvement. And the design build process, that sort of process is a little bit curtailed. So what we did when we had to produce our first or proposed design as part of a competitive selection process, we sort of based it upon kind of everything that we could glean and understand from the community process that has been going on here in Larkspur for many years. And so, you know, the design that we produced and presented and were selected for is still pretty much, you know, the heart of it is all there. There have been a bunch of changes that we have made in consultation with committee and with some of the key stakeholders, the Commons Foundation, the HOA. And there's some people that we were involved. But this is our first real large community meeting. And so what we want to do is to sort of show you kind of where we have come to. Sort of walk through the design. I'll do, I'll start out. And the landscape architects will explain the site features. And I'll come back and talk to you about the library floor plan and how it really works. And then Tom will walk through some of the more sort of design issues for the project. And so that's kind of what our presentation will be. And so anyway, with that, I'd like to go over to Nathan to talk a little bit about the site plan. And, you know, some of the, you know, that we've made from the original proposal, I don't know if you're all familiar.
Thanks, Chris. And so, yeah, so as you see here on the board, the site plan, and I think Chris alluded to in the original proposal that the design build scheme did, it had slightly different configuration with the parking located kind of away from the center of the site. The revised current site plan shows essentially access drive through the, at the center of the site to allow for pick up and drop off close to the building and the ADA's bases there. There's also pedestrian circulation around the building along Doherty Drive. Two ways to get in to the library there, as well as the more parking main entrance from the south. Also, at the site, there are spaces for outdoor gathering and outdoor use to extend the library. Yeah, it kind of is an indoor-outdoor connection, really taking advantage of the beautiful space that is, that the site is and the views of Mount Pam and the kind of natural qualities that we want to bring to the site. So with that, I think the most significant space is the, at the west side of the site, the library is filled out into kind of an open, open green space, which it kind of kind of embraces like an outdoor connection, there's both hardscape space as well as softscaping space. And then also there are some kind of opportunity areas, there kind of the value and enhancements. So not a part of the base contract, but have potential additions to enhance space at the east end of the building with outdoor, kind of an upper community room and then also space at the north, at the north entrance as well. And then the landscape, you know, planting is really, you know, focused on native planting, drought tolerant planting and low maintenance, low water use. And then, yeah, I think that's, that's the basics of it. If you want to, the same thing.
No, I mean, one of the key things that Nathan mentioned was that there are portions of it that's kind of the lighter drawn portions are not necessarily in the contract yet. We're waiting for funding to be able to afford some portions of the site.
Yeah, right. So the eastern and southern edge are kind of additional space that would be not in the base contract, but additional.
The pointer doesn't work.
And then come the next one. Oh, I think, oh, thank you. Yeah, and so here you can see, you know, essentially the palette.
Sorry to interrupt. You can speak in the light of the sun.
So here you can see the palette of planting, which is, is for the trees, it's a coast live oak, also elm tree, the Chinese elm to shade, provide a lot of shade in the parking lot. And then there's some accent planting as well with bengalia and eastern, eastern redwood for that kind of flowering seasonal deciduous trees. And then the ground story particularly is, is the California as I believe you well here.
Julian, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so I asked Nolan and Tam and Alton to add on to the site plan that they've been working on for the new building to add the, what we call the sliver parcel, which is, as you enter Rose from Doherty will be on the right-hand side or the west of, of Rose, it was a small parcel area that the city also owns. It is not part of their contract, but in the overall budget that the city has adopted, we have funds identified to add some parking in this sliver parcel. And the thought is that this will be more of your long-term parking. So for example, staff could park here to free up the parking that's closer to the building for the patients of the library.
So what I want to do is walk you through the building, give you a, give you a guided tour of your new library, what it's going to be like. And this is, I may stand over here so I can point a little bit easier to show, can you all see? No good place to stand. Anyway, the parking is down here and this is the main entrance. There's another entrance that comes in from Doherty Drive. So there's two doors, front doors to the building, one on either side. And halfway between them is the main service desk, so that Damon and this staff can keep an eye on who's coming and going in the library and have a good sense from a central location of what goes on. As you come into the library, on the right-hand side is the book drop room, most important room in the building. And so there's an exterior book drop here and the room for a future machine, a sorting machine, let me go into that. And there's a book locker here. I don't know if you know, there is a book locker there, we can bring that over and put it here right next by the front door. And then the area to the right is going to be for school parking, bicycle parking. So there'll be plenty of bike parking on the site. As you come in, this is the main reading room here. We have collections in the middle, computers and printers are over here. Some say table seating at this point, and then that opens out onto this outdoor plaza. We really do see the, this library in this location as being an indoor-outdoor space. The weather here is so great and the space that we're allowed to build, because the state grant is so small, that, you know, we're trying to leverage what we can by having outdoor spaces that really just spill out from the library. So you can use the outdoor space as part of the functioning library. Towards that end, this is a wall of sliding glass doors that can open up. So two thirds of that wall can be open and you can spill right out onto this patio right here. This corner of the building, and you'll see better in some renderings, is kind of our quiet reading area. The bookshelves around three sides of the room and there's some comfortable seating in there. So this will be kind of the quiet portion of the library, inasmuch as many libraries are very quiet in states. They're pretty packed in spaces. But we're doing our best to kind of have, you know, to zone the library so the noisy stuff is over here and quieter stuff is over here. And it also has another door that exits onto the patio here. So this is the paved part of that patio. And then this is where there's going to be kind of a lawn and a bench around here. So this could become a really nice event space for, for you. We have four smaller group study rooms. These are functions that are really popular in libraries. You know, all kinds of things that you can get a place to go and have a quiet read. You can have a Zoom call in there and have doctors' video call. Have a collaboration in there where you can make noise and one of other people, so you can go to those rooms, do a variety of different things. And windows that look out toward Doherty and glass walls on the inside. So everything is very visible within the library, no hidden corners. Another sort of set of lounge seating right here, new books display there, self-check machine over here and some collections on the walls. And then, you know, the other patio area out there on the Doherty Street side should be another, you know, very nice place on the north side of the building. So we have a south side, sunny. You'll be able to find kind of the, the temperature that you like, you know. And we have a lot of shade that we're trying to divide, so then when it gets hot, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not unbearable. Those are the main things in this room. And then just to the right is the children's room. So this is about twice the size of the children's area that you have right now. When we got the program, you know, that was part of the competition, we made a couple of unilateral decisions for our proposals. One was to double size the children's area and to create a teen area that has its own special teen space. So looking to the youth of Larkspur and kind of what could Looking to the youth of Larkspur and kind of what could we provide for them, that would be really great. So the children's area has, you know, it's sort of a number of different zones, it's got some seating, some collections. It has some more seating, has a little nook over here with, has, kind of has some really fun decorative things, a place for the children to go into. And it also has its own patio that has a fence around it, so it's secure. And you can open up these glass walls right here, so that the indoor-outdoor spaces can be used for children as well. It also has another set of glass doors right here that get you into the community meeting rooms, but again. You can open these two spaces and use them for story time or activities, crafts. But when you want to use it for a community function, you can close these doors and access it from the other side. This is the team room up here. It has a number of different seating configurations, and one thing about teens is they like to sell things in different ways. They sit backwards and upside down on chairs, and so we'd like to have the right kind of furniture in there to suit them. It has some tables, has some bar seating, some lounge chairs, and then just outside of it are some booting seating, kind of like diners and seating. That's really popular with teens, but it's, it's actually really popular with adults too. So we didn't lock it behind the doors of the team area and kept it out where everybody could access it, including the teen collections. There are a few collections in the room, but most of the teen collections are outside the room, because again. Teen collections are everybody's collections, particularly things like manga and stuff like that, so. We try to make sure that, you know, the teen room is for teens, so we don't want to have things in there that the adults can't get to when they want to. At this point in the corridor, there's a, there's a set of doors that can be closed off, so that. After hours, we can close these doors and you can access the community meeting rooms down here. But just beyond those doors are the restrooms, these are all gender restroom. Here, so it's multi occupancy all gender, which means that anybody can go in there, there's full walls, full doors on those for complete privacy. Hand washing outside, three cubicles inside the restroom, and then we have another separate restroom right next to it. So, and that's really kind of for the children, you know, that they don't have to go into the adult restroom, they can get to it that way, so trying to give. A little bit of everything for everybody in terms of the restrooms, including a dedicated staff restroom, just on the other side, so the staff have their own restroom. And this is the staff area here. We have a sort of staff area, he went better than I can, with six workstations, an office up in the corner. A storage room over there is the staff break room, and then this is the, the collection is in this room right here. And this is the, is this the same glass window? Bring over.
Display camera.
Display camera, right. Maybe the same glass one goes maybe in the remarks. So we're trying to preserve some of the things that we are bringing over. And then coming down this hallway, we have a storage closet or an IT closet, we have a large storage room for the large meeting room and furniture, so that you can. Change the configuration in here and have some flexibility, so enough for lectures, for round tables or rectangular tables, but there's enough room in this space. To store different configurations out of the way. And a kitchenette as well, so that you can have, you know, food and coffee and other functions in that space. And then this is the small meeting room, so we have three community meeting rooms, large, medium, and small. And they have an outdoor access here, so that after hours, you can close those, that pair of doors in the corridor there. Let people in through this way, and then they have access to all of those rooms. And then out here is another patio. That is useful outdoor space, over tables and chairs, and again, another glass wall that opens up. So there are a lot of big glass walls that open up in the building to allow you to kind of flow in and out of the building. That's pretty much, there's a mechanical and optical room up in the upper corner, and there'll be some stuff outside in this upper corner over here that's more of a. Sort of industrial nature, you have the fire sprinklerizer and some electrical panels installed around the kitchen and the pretty picture plant we have here. Did I forget anything, Tom?
No, that's it.
And then, oh, there's another view that we have. That sometimes makes it easier to see, which is kind of a perspective view. And sort of has the furniture in three, in sort of a 3D perspective, so it gives you a sense of how big things are. How they fit and how you maneuver around by sort of showing the furniture here. Particularly, it gets you the book displays here and the service desk, the main reading room here, the children's and teens', and all those others. Anyway, that's kind of just that. How Tom can explain how it looks.
I'm Neil, I'm Old Tam. The exterior materials, we wanted to use kind of robust, easy to maintain. That are going to wear well over a long period of time, so primarily the. Exterior siding is thoroughly, thoroughly treated wood. Which means that they, they bake the wood so that all the kind of organic material that would rot is removed. And so the color gray is all the way through the material, so if it's damaged, you can sand it off or refinish it. And it has about a 50-year warranty, which is about as good as you can get for a kind of wood-like material. The glass pieces are painted aluminum frame, the glass is a. High efficiency low E glass. Over the patios currently, we show some shade sails that shade the patios. Looking at the community side. Door slot opens, you can come outside, the wood siding comes around for the office areas. Exterior material becomes cement plaster, stucco. Shake sails again. Landscaping and a few of that. This is from the Doherty Street side. There will be more trees here, we've kind of made them a little lighter so you can see the front of the building. But the idea was to kind of push this corner of the building back, so we'd have more planting to screen the office areas. And then this part of the building gets a little closer to the, to the intersection of Doherty. These are the meeting rooms, the four little meeting rooms here, the event lawn and the north side entrance from Doherty. Description of the exterior materials, wood siding, the window color, redwood fence, shade sails. All the lighting will be, you know, dark sky lighting. Just some neighborhood context photos. Exterior elevations kind of straight on to get a, to get a sense of the building, again, one side is. The, the main entry side is all the wood siding, and then the other side is more cement plaster. And the redwood fence along, along the two properties on the, on the east side of the property. Some, some views of the interior, this is, we're still very much in the process here, but just, just an idea of how the spaces will be. This is the reception desk, looking, you know, out toward the lawn and that patio, these are the. Breakout rooms there, this one is looking toward the children's and the teens' area, and a couple of kind of inside the children's room.
Yes, for the staff or the applicants? Great, thank you very much. That was really interesting and really informative. We've lost the commissioner just for temporarily, I have to make a phone call, but hopefully it'll be shortly. But in the meantime, I think we have an opportunity now to ask questions outside, I know I have a few.
Yeah, go ahead, and obviously if you, you ask my question.
Okay. So I have not been part of the process of. Dealing with the public about what the library will look like and being a not part of the comments. I'm really appreciative of all the effort that the community has provided and all the hard work everyone's done. In raising the funds and doing, getting to this point, and I really want to just say that upfront, I mean, the fact that we're here is, is, is. Fantastic. And I also want to thank everyone for coming tonight and showing interest in this and providing comments. I'm really pleased that everybody's here. So part of the, I guess, a concern of mine, because I was not involved, is I had only ever seen the original. Sort of mission style design. And when I was first given the plans, I was sort of surprised, taken aback at the modern design that I was seeing. So I just wanted to understand a little bit about how we got from, what can you talk to, how we got from. What was on the brochure, I guess, an admission style design to this design here. And I also understand that the original, there was an original, it was like 20,000 feet of library space. And this is now 8,000. Eight thousand nine hundred, I think you said. And maybe as part of that comment, can you just clarify? I heard you say in your comments earlier that the library portion is the same, so we're not reducing actual library portion. And in addition to, it's going to be the exact same library space? And then there's some additional community spaces? So I guess that's three-part question then.
Yeah, okay, I can start out with the, I'll start out with the 20,000 to 6845, so. There were plans with previous efforts to look at a library, and I believe back in the, earlier, the 2012, 2013, and we're looking overall at a, at a 20,000 square foot. Library. Once that project up restarted, we started looking at a much smaller and phased approach to the library, even a 5,000 square foot with a second phase for 10,000. And then a library grant was announced, and initially it was, the grand purpose was to renovate libraries. We made the argument that we could build a new library for less money than it would cost to rehabilitate the existing library. And the state said, okay, that makes sense, but you can't build a bigger library than you have, because technically it's a renovation grant. It's not to expand your library, so that's where the 6845 square feet of the library came from versus the older iterations that were 20,000 and 5,000 plus. Other phases at, at some point. And then the city has added some community space, that is, those three breakout rooms that you saw. At the east end of, of the library, and Nolan Tam's proposal did show a connection between the children's library and one of those meetings, so there's a direct. Available expansion of the library in that space. And then we haven't put together a program yet for how those meeting rooms would be used or rented, but they would if they were to be available for the library program to, to move into, so. In effect, that could be additional library space that would be available. Like, keep going, or you want to add on to that?
I think I might, it's been a little, maybe do city manager speak instead of engineering speak for a second. So first of all, I ask you to, to take a step back and not get too hung up on the word library. The whole building is a library and community center, and the reality is, that's what libraries are today. And so. What Julian is sort of trying to explain, because it's where he's focused right now, is. The state library department said, we will only let you build. The same size with the grant money. And so we, in our terminology, when we talk with the state, we kind of have to keep talking about the library as this 6,800 square foot. And then we have what the council said they would do, which is make this building bigger. But when it's done, it's one building, it's the library, it just happens that during this journey. We have to kind of keep talking about it in these two ways because of the funding sources. I don't want to bore you, there's actually a whole bunch of pots that the finance folks and I are trying to keep straight with Julian. It's actually a four, five projects when you get down into the weeds, and so. I would just say, let's all agree, tonight we're looking at an 8,900 square foot library. And it happens that in that building, one of the amenities that the council has agreed to fund above. And beyond what the Commons Foundation and the state are funding, are additional community rooms, because what we heard in 2012, what we heard in 2016, what we heard in 2020. What we heard yesterday is that there is a dirt of meeting spaces in the city of Larkspur. If you're going to build this building, please make sure it has spaces that the library can use for programming during the day. But we can also use for meetings, particularly in the evening, so that's, that's the way I ask you to kind of think, that's how I think about it. And that 20,000 square foot, we actually, if you go all the way back to 2012, we looked at 36,000 square feet, I mean, we were. High to the sky, what's the biggest thing we could possibly build on the property? So that environmental document looked at that whole range of options. And the 20,000 square foot happened to be where we landed at a process that we had been previously. And then you asked about the mission style.
Right.
So a little context to that, it's not designs, those aren't designs, they're just some watercolors, so I want to be really clear that what you have tonight is the design. What you have that you're referencing are some watercolors that were circulated. I'm not a fundraising person, I have a hard time walking into somebody's living room and saying, would you please do me a check for six figures? I wish I had that skill set, and I'm looking over at a partner I know has that skill set, and she tells me how hard it is to do that. And her predecessor, Joe Jennings, who quite frankly, I, I, we wouldn't be here but for Joe's vision of what. What fundraising needed to be in the community. He came to us at one point, he said, I can't ask people to write checks if I don't show them something. And I told him, I said, Joe, the problem with that is I don't know what it's going to look like when we get through an actual process. He said, I don't care, I have to put something in front of people. And I said, okay, well, every time you put something in front of you, would you please put some disclaimers on it, that this is just for fundraising purposes? And it's put out by the Commons Foundation, and it's not necessarily what the public process that the city's going to conduct is going to produce. So that's where you get the discrepancy, those documents with the Spanish style, they're not the city's documents, so the Commons Foundation's, and I totally respect. That Joe needed that, and quite frankly, after he started circulating the watercolors. He started telling me the dollars were coming in, and I know, I saw the comments, there are people who feel their donations were tied to that style, and. And, you know, that's a conversation that can come out with us, but. It was not anybody's intention to mislead, and I truly believe that people who sat with Joe, people who sat with him worse than the current president. Were told that was for the purpose of starting a conversation, and it wasn't necessarily what the final product would look like. That's how we got there.
Hey, thank you. And then can you also, another sort of design question was. I understand there's a slight angle to the building. That maybe it doesn't run flush along Doherty, can you just address that as to, please?
Yeah, I can start, and then the architects can jump in if I miss anything, but. When you saw the site plan, I think is where it shows up best, there is a slight skew, and I think. What they touched on is that there's the end of the building where the library is, where there's the flow from the indoor space to the outdoor, there's a community gathering space there. They felt that was a focal point of the building, and so they wanted that to be close to the intersection for visibility. As you move to the east end of the building, you see we go from the wood siding to the cement plaster siding, and you've got the smaller windows because it's the office space. So it's more of the business end of the building, it's also where the electrical room. And the electrical panels will be, so it doesn't have quite the visual impact as the other end of the building, so. That's one of the main reasons why they sent the building and they treat that end of the building that has more of the business end. A little bit further back from the street, and they made more prominent the end of the building that opens up to the public space. And the other thing that does is allows you more room for landscaping to screen that kind of business end of the building from the street.
When you say the business end, you mean that the stucco motion?
And where the offices are, so you've got more of the smaller type windows, like you have in an office as opposed to the larger windows you have in a library.
Expectation is that that kind of concrete stucco will be, would be screened with, with trees and.
It would be filtered with the, with the trees on the landscape, yes. Chris, did I listen in?
No, I think you did a pretty good job, and it's going to be a nice looking stucco, so. Yeah, and I think, and I think Julian did a pretty good job. Yeah, and I think, and I think Julian did a pretty good job, I mean, what we're trying to do is find, you know, balance on the site and not be just orthogonal to the street. And to maintain that viewpoint or the mountain, which is now kind of coming in front of the build. And so by orienting the building, that slight angle, sort of pick up on that.
So on that viewpoint, um, and I saw an earlier design that had, I think, carried in the middle of the site. That was open and they called it the Commons. And now that's gone, and it looks like it's a parking area. So what happened to that open area, that little like grassy area?
So I can, I can start, so, um, yeah, there was the, uh, the. Previous version of this back in, in, um, February did have the parking lot closer to Orket. And then, um, there was a big open green space in between the building and the parking lot. Um, and so we did have some conversations, um, about that. One of the first things that came up is the parking lot was very far away from the building. And, um, that it would mean people would have to walk from the parking spaces, including. Um, getting from the accessible, ADA accessible spaces in the parking lot at one end of the site, all the way to the building, um, at the other side. Um, and also we're conscious about having large, open green spaces and watering needs and drought and things like that, and so. What, what the team came up with was, yes, the indoor outdoor flow is very nice and we kind of like the idea of the outdoor space, but. You know, maybe having it directly in front of the front door where everybody's coming in and out and everybody's walking past. From the parking lot isn't the best place for that, and so. That concept kind of morphed over to that west end of the building and they were able to create an outdoor space that flows a lot better. With the building because it comes off of that open end of the building as opposed to lining up with the front doors of the building and kind of getting in the way of. People moving back and forth from the, from the parking lot, um, into the building. The other thing this layout does is it does accommodate a little bit better future use of the site. Um, if there's ever an expansion or other, uh, uses on the site, this leaves, um, more of a contiguous area as opposed to when the parking lot was pushed all the way to, to Orket. Um, and then we're also sensitive to the, the proximity to the residential neighborhood and, and having the parking lot right up against Orket with the. The homes on the other side of the street, this gives us an opportunity to kind of do a double layer of landscape buffer where we'll put a buffer of landscaping along Orket and then we'll have the landscape buffer on the parking lot, so. We've kind of got a, an actual layer here to, to try and prevent those headlights from getting into the, uh, residential area.
Couldn't say it better myself, Julian. Um, the other, the other thing that we did, um, out of my, my original concept was adding the entrance from Doherty, so that we have entrances on both sides. So in the previous scheme, we, you know, we're just looking at the center, you know, plaza as being the entry.
Okay, I may have a couple more questions on that, which I'll come back to. Uh, but you mentioned expansion. So what would an expansion look like? Would it be about going up, going out, going to a different area?
Yeah, we wouldn't go off, this was one of the requirements of the RFP, was they had to design the site. Uh, with an accommodation that you could fit another ten thousand square feet in somewhere in the future. So in all the proposals, they had different rectangles of where, um, that would, that would fit, so, um, I think I pointed out.
The plan would be to expand the building this way, maybe an L shape, uh, to pick up more square footage. We have this area in here, if we wanted something to stand alone, like a larger community room, but. Yeah, but the, the, this part of the site was thought of as a future, uh, addition.
We'd likely add some more parking if we added more, that's the part of the building, so that parking lot will then expand down.
Okay, so the idea is that if we expanded, it would come out east. And potentially say, okay, which, which led to my other question is what, I didn't really understand what was happening to the. Portion that was kind of around the edge. And it sounds like that you're leaving that untouched for now, is that the idea, or will you landscape it and then? Have it as potentially a future area we could expand to, is, is, am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, future parking as well as the site for some future expansion. But for right now, it's our, what we call the happy outcome, which is, uh, you know, being some bare. Um, kind of simple, you know, non-irrigated landscaping, um. And there, and if we are, um, if the funds are allowed for that, we could, well, that would be a more landscape area.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just spend here, just in case.
Um, and then there's a fence that's going up, an eight foot fence, can you just show us on the plan where that's going to go? All the way down the edge. Right, and there's an existing six foot fence, and that's just replacing that and just going up, okay.
It's not eight feet all the way, it's eight feet from sort of the garage, um, and. And so it's sort of part of this eight feet, six feet of solid and two feet of a, kind of a lattice, like, portion at the top. And we had to walk through the two, the neighbors that were associated right next to it. And we sort of walked through the areas and they seemed happy.
And then, um, across the street, there's an area, and I thought I heard that you were putting parking in there, so that's funded and that's happening?
Yeah, that is funded, it's outside of this construction contract that's focused on the building and the site proper, but as part of the council action to approve the budget for the overall. Library, um, development, they allocated funding for, um, that, I think it was about thirteen parking spaces on that little sliver partial at the far left side of the screen.
I want to move on to sustainability, we have a lot of questions on, on. Why isn't there sort of panels being shown on this site? What, what are we doing with charging, EV charging, bike charging? Um. How can we take advantage of sunny California and have this building pay for itself when it comes to the. Um, utilities, can you address that?
Right, so, um, as I mentioned when we did the design, um, build, um, RFP, RQ. Uh, we did include in that asking the proposers for a price for adding, uh, fifteen kilowatts of, of solar. Um, to the building, which we roughly speaking is probably about a third of what the building would need to be fully run by, by solar. Um, so that was included as one of those enhancements, um, and as I mentioned previously, we will be going back to the city council. As we've gone through this process to evaluate how many of the enhancements that, uh, we identified at the project award and then how many have come up through this process. Uh, how many they would like to move forward with. Uh, we have got some feedback from the community and questions about the solar. Um, and so what we, what we will be coming forward to the council with is not just the fifteen kilowatts that was included, um. In the original proposal as an enhancement, but we've asked them to do a couple of iterations, one would be doubling that to thirty. And the other would be what we think is about forty five, which should be enough to, uh, run the whole building. So they are working now on putting those costs, uh, together to bring back to us and then we can present those to the city council with the other. Um, additional cost options that have, have come up and see what fits within the budget.
So how do we know that's going to happen? Like, how do we get some, some reassurance that we would have several panels on this building, like, how does that process go?
So, uh, maybe I'll try my city manager speaking again. So the way this is all set up is that you, you're bought, we use this process when we bought a building. And in this particular instance with solar, the building's plumbed for solar, just like most of you bought a newer house, right? All new houses are required to be plumbed for solar, but they often don't have the solar panels put on, something that the homeowner decides to do. Uh, so the, the. Yeah, as Julian said, we had a quote, not just to plumb it, which is built in, but he said, oh, okay, what, what if we cost about fifteen kilowatts on? And now we've said, no, that's not enough, we want to know, we might want to put more, we might want to offset. Uh, the terminology of now I won't be city manager, I'll be geeky for a second, we'll try to offset your, your electrical use during the day. So, uh, okay, so your question is, how can I promise you that it'll happen? I can only tell you that the staff is going to bring a recommendation to the council. I am not a voting member of the city council, so I can't tell you. I do feel that the four members will probably vote yes, because I'm going to tell them that I've found the money to pay for it. But I can't tell you that they will, because that, that's their role to play. Um, so I guess what I'd say is I think we're on a path, uh, to have solar on the building. Um, I will tell you, because I think probably most homeowners, including myself, when we put solar on, we didn't have to think very hard about. It, other than we'll work it out with the installer, uh, it's a lot more complicated in this case, because we have to figure out how much PGE will actually let us. Put, and we may have to do it in a phased approach for finding out, to get all our permits from PGE, but we'll get there. Provided the council says yes when they bring in the cost.
One of the things I noticed is that the slope of the roof, um, if you did want to do solar is north facing as opposed to south facing. Um, and if you're going to maximize solar, then it may require a rethinking of the slope of that roof.
Um, there's actually both north and south facing slopes, there's some, uh, treatments to the end of the roof, so make it, don't make it as quite as clear when you're looking straight on at the elevations. Uh, but there is a, um, there's a roof plan that shows it a lot better, that there's actually almost equivalent, uh, north and south facing sloping roofs. But in addition to that, in going through these iterations with our team, it's been determined that there's actually a section of flat roof that's. The more ideal, uh, than even the south facing, uh, roof, because the, the panels will be easier to maintain, uh, if you put on the flat roof, so. They're working through a plan now that will, would maximize that flat roof area and then there would be a bit of a spill over to the, to the south, uh, roof also, but we. From what we've learned today, there's enough flat and south to accommodate solar panels up around the building.
But assuming that you've looked into the cost of, uh, the gas generator and some of the environmental impact of having a gas generator on the site, I can understand why it's necessary. But in terms of solar battery, um, uh, cost, which is not an insignificant cost, but it's coming down. But I can imagine that the cost of a gas generator is fairly substantial, including running the gas lines, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm going to jump in, just, uh, want to address this question. And I want to remind you something I said at the beginning, uh, I think there's a lot of focus on the fact this is a library, which is correct. But it's also serving another purpose that the council was very adamant it would be, this is still. This is where we're going to go when people need clean air, this is where we're going to go if people need to charge their devices, including. People who at home have portable life sustaining devices. This is where we're going to go if we need a warming center, this is where we're going to go when we need a cooling center. So this question of what the backup energy is going to be, I'm pressing him all the time about this. I want to be able to tell the council and community that I can guarantee everything I just said could happen, no matter what the world looks like. And actually, I have some questions myself, I've seen some people, whether or not gas is the right one to, but. I'm being told by experts that backup batteries serve certain purposes, they not, may not necessarily be able to serve all of those purposes, so we. We need to find an alternative in that crisis mode, and maybe it's not the gas generator and Julian can speak to some other technical options he's looking for. But we're not really focusing on this particular aspect as a cost measure so much as. We heard loud and clear that this was a secondary purpose of the building we need to deliver, and let's figure out how to do that.
Yeah, I'm not talking either or, I, I mean, I think that and is probably the word that I'm looking at.
No, I understand, I just really want to make that point, because I, I actually want to, there's some brilliant people in our community and I've gotten these spreadsheets from folks who really have shown me how. Solar will pay off and the battery will pay off, and I, I, I believe them and I believe the team because they've shown me similar numbers. But actually, this is a rare, rare, rare time where I've taken off my finance hat and I'm just really focused on. I don't want to stand in front of the community and say, I'm not really sure if the HVAC's going to work when the power goes out, I want to be able to say it will. And that's a big part of the design process. So I'd like to let Julian speak to what his team's been analyzing in terms of those backup resources.
Yeah, so as far as the backup goes, uh, back when we did the initial criteria docs, documents, which is what was given to the teams to propose on. Uh, we initially put in, um, a gas pipe generator. The reason being, uh, based on other residency centers that they had worked with, where there was a need to keep the building fully functional for multiple days into weeks. Um, the, the, the gas generator provides the most consistent, available, I know it's going to work. It's not foolproof, as we're working through this process, um, you know, there are some downsides to gas, but at the time, that's what we looked at with the criteria document. Since then, we're now also looking at, um, diesel as an option, so gas is a little cleaner, or sorry, diesels. You've got the clean versus the dirty, but you've also got the, you know, is, what happens if PGE shuts the gas off? Then, you know, the gas generator's not so great anymore. Um, but, you know, what happens if we can't get diesel, then maybe the diesel, so we're looking at the trade off between those two. At the moment, um, we're looking at those for the long term functioning of the building. Yes, we think there's a battery option that we can implement where. On your normal power outages, the lights are going to stay on and we'll be able to do some of the functions, but. Those big motors that drive the, the air conditioning, um, those really will drain a power source and that's what you need, the big generator, be it diesel or gas. Um, we haven't been able to find a, a battery system yet that we think we're going to be able to stand behind and be able to assure folks that. If we need this building for a week or if we want to make sure the air conditioning is working, that we've got a battery solution. We're still looking, but from what I've been told, you're looking at shipping container sized crates on the site to house batteries that would. Be able to, um, accommodate those types of loads. So, you know, it's, it, it most likely would be the gas, the gas has the advantage if it's there, you don't have to worry about it. Has a disadvantage, uh, if PGE shuts the gas off, it doesn't work. Um, the diesel, uh, with the diesel, there's an option where we can actually have a remote hookup to the building, so. There's not actually a generator there all the time, you just have a hookup. Um, and the other benefit to the diesel is, as we've been looking into this further, there's the potential that. We could get a diesel backup generator that'll also work at one of our storm drain pump stations, so that becomes a more attractive, um, opportunity to look at if we can. Invest in a, in a generator that would be able to use either a building or a pump station, adds a, adds a little bit more weight to the, to the diesel side, there is the offset of. Somebody's got to go and put diesel in it throughout an event. Um, so we've actually got a, a meeting tomorrow afternoon to have another kind of come together of, of, of the team and we anticipate when we go to council, we'll have a. Staff recommendation on what we think the, the, the backup option should be.
And to be clear, that generator is running like during a, a power outage or an emergency situation, not all the time.
It's purely a backup emergency generator, yes.
And it sounds like it's a backup, not even in normal circumstances, that's what I thought I heard, was you would, you, it looks like you're trying to put in the, the batteries.
If we went solar, yeah, if we go solar, there's an option to augment the solar panels that would power the building with, uh, a kind of a side array of solar panels that would then. Uh, charge a set of batteries that could be used for your, you know, if the power goes out for ten minutes or it goes out for an hour and it'll keep the lights on and certain circuits will be dedicated. It'll handle a much smaller load than the backup generator would, but we would, we would wire the building, so if the power went out, it would go to batteries. And then we would have to flip on the generator if we said, wait a minute, this is, this is going to be a while, this is a big event, we need to get the generator ready to go.
Um, and on that, you mentioned, because somebody had a question about EV chargers and, um. Sounds like you are including, you are including that.
Uh, yeah, I can. Yes, we arm wrestle about this one, and I won, so we're gonna, we're gonna put in eight EV level two chargers on the site on day one. With plumbing to do the wire later on. We felt that's a pretty good issue, that's twenty five percent of parking space is dedicated to EV charging. That's a pretty high number, um, on an opening day for a facility like this, but, um. We know our community, we, we see what's driving around our community, and we suspect the demand is there.
Yeah, totally different subject. How much consideration has been given to sea level rise? I mean, you know, where, where this place is, is pretty close to the sea level. Um, you know, by twenty fifty, it's estimated that we'll have about one foot rise in sea level. By twenty one hundred, somewhere between two to four feet. Uh, and that's, that's our conservative estimates, uh, given that this is a building that's, you know, hopefully will be using for, you know. At least eighty to a hundred years. What kind of thinking is going into that?
Right, so, um, so where the library is, it is just outside of the FEMA. Right, so, um, so where the library is, it is just outside of the FEMA flood zone. Um, and so the building is, has, is going to have a finished floor that's going to be at elevation 12, which is a full two feet. Uh, higher than what the FEMA hundred year flood is today. Um, given that, that water level has never been higher than nine here in history, but the FEMA guideline is that, that water level, uh, is designed at 10. We're going to be at 12, so we're going to be a full three feet higher than what the highest water level has been. Here, I think when it comes to sea level rise, it's a question where you look at what would we have to do to this building on this site if we were to accommodate another. Three feet of sea level rise and all of a sudden you're looking at a building that's. You know, very integrated with, um, the walkways around is going to have open patio areas outside. There's going to be a lot of flow from inside, outside of the building. If you elevate this building up, you're elevating the whole. Um, site, um, and you know, maybe that's something that 50 or a hundred years from now that may have been an option, but I think also as you look at the neighborhood. We have all the houses around. You've got our major materials like the authority drive, um, you know, when we look at sea level rise. Um, and the amount of money that we have to put into this building to elevate it and what it would do to the access for the building over the next few years, I think. You know, as our communities come together and we start to attack, um, sea level rise, plan for what we're going to do, we're going to be looking more at. Community solutions versus one off spending millions of dollars. Um, you know, now for something that's 50 years down the road. So we're not discounting it, but we're anticipating that this is getting a problem. Beyond just the library in the future and what we end up doing to protect authority drive or hall middle school or the houses around there will likely also work for the library.
Okay, thanks.
All right, let's keep going, um. Yeah, questions about, um, for parents, you know, kids. Sounds like you are incorporating stroller parking. And I think not in pets, um, and then, um. And I assume this is maybe not at this level, but like bathrooms for kids, like lower. Schools so the kids can get out and smaller wash basins.
In our libraries, we have children, dedicated children's bathrooms. Um, but in this library, it's such a small space that when we tried to. Put a dedicated children's restroom in there, we, we lost a lot of capacity, it's very disruptive. So what we did as a compromise was take one of those stalls that is in the all gender restroom and then. Have it as a single occupancy restroom from the corner, so the children can use that restroom as a kind of compromise.
Right, and it's, it hasn't, it, it, they can reach it, I guess is the question. They can reach it, that's the whole thing about how many children and they can have reached the taps and they can't.
They, they ought to be able to reach the taps and we can put one of those little fold down sets, which is something we often do if it's a dedicated.
Um, does anyone want to address the comments about the whole line T locker and the stain guards? Can you say something we can do quickly?
Yeah, there is, um, an archive room that's next to the staff area, uh, that's been set aside. Um, based on our commitment to allow an area in the building for the storage of those materials. And then, um, the stain hub window has come up a few times and we've. Looked at incorporating it, but it turns out it's not the greatest plan to incorporate the old window in a, in a new door for a lot of reasons, so we're looking at repurposing it. Somehow on a wall, but not necessarily as a functional window, uh, in a new library.
And then.
The lockers, the, the, I see what, what they're referring to is we have what looks like an Amazon locker on City Hall right now. And people can request materials and they're glad to come those lockers for after hours. It will move to the new facility.
That will come, okay.
I'm, I wouldn't be surprised if they have folks that aren't thrilled about that. I mean, down the road, we need a second one. This is really popular.
Now, if you cover mine.
I cover yours.
Oh, I. I mean, you mentioned that it's a community center and obviously community centers. Work really well when you have the ability to have these like food trucks and events, you know, for wine, things. Any kind of events, uh, is there any plan in the design for that, uh, eventuality where we want to have? Food trucks or concession stands or anything around that.
Um, so. The council's longstanding direction to staff is to program the building and even through the design, uh, to. Hold ourselves to the same requirements we can hold any property owner and landlord. So. Yes, there's the potential for events, but we'll need to plan those events within the constraints of our own regulations such as the noise rating. So we always have to be thoughtful about. Does this activity make sense in that context? And. One of the things we've talked about in our community services unit is, um. You know, we have to be a little more sensitive to the proximity of residential use. Whereas something at Piper, for example, are a little more removed from residential use and maybe some of those types of events are better suited to be in over there.
Any more questions from the question? So we'd like to open it up with a lot of comments. Um, can just sort of show hands who would like to make a comment? Okay, so we.
Yeah, so obviously it's, uh. So, so to keep things moving and so we don't, um, go into the wee hours of the night. Um, all the comments, we usually limit to two minutes. Um, I know we have some exceptions for our.
One individual, I think, is coming from climate, right, can you do, we previously asked for a six minute comment, so.
And representing like a lot of people, you know, about the climate issues. So if we can limit comments to two minutes, and the other thing about comments is if somebody said something already. You don't need to repeat it. Um, you know, so if, if you find that someone's saying the exact same thing that you wanted to say, then maybe say something different. Uh, just so that we keep, uh, this moving in a reasonable fashion.
And people have submitted written comments. We read every comment. And a lot of the questions I've asked have been from written comments that we have been sent. So we read, we understand, we're trying to address everything that has been raised. Uh, and we want to allow everyone to have a chance to speak, so. Uh, that's why we're just trying to get through this quickly, um, so that's why we're limiting the comments to two minutes. So if you'd like to come up for a line or, um.
Chris, can you put up the, um, the, the one that has the dollhouse? The dollhouse that moves.
I will, I'll put that up in just a second. I would also just request that when you give your comment, if you could state your name, please.
I'm Anne Morris, it's the Common Foundation, council member, mayor. Um, I just want to go back quickly back to 2012. It's such an faulty wonderful story that must be shared. So Dan Schwartz is part of this and the council in 2012. When the developer bought the Niddens property, which is now the Rose Lane, they asked the developer to give. To donate back the 2.4 acres of land and the developer did pretty amazing. And then they had the insight, the vision to put a library, community gathering space in that property. And then in, in 2018, Joe Jennings reached out to some council members, I happen to be one of them. And he said, I have a vision. A vision is to reach out to the public and to raise the $5 million plus dollars. And with that, he goes, the donors, which are many of the faces out here now, and I just have to thank. Good on you. It's pretty amazing because not only did you trust Joe Jennings, you also trusted the city. So that's, that's just incredible. So, um, I do have, um, four heroes, for, before I type of four heroes. I think this plan is incredible. I mean, it has flexibility, indoor, outdoor space that the public has been asking. It can grow with the community, so I just think they did an excellent job in, in the architectural design, so thank you for that. Uh, I do have four heroes. Four heroes would be, uh, Joe Jennings, amazing, amazing, and then Dan Schwartz that also saw the vision. And then to work with Julian Skinner, he's just been amazing with the Common Foundation, and then the Thorin girls, that is of course the donors, so thank you. Uh, I just want to say pitch, we are still fundraising and we need, we need more of the interior and the exterior. We also have a building to name. We've got lots of rooms right here that needs to be made. I tell you, when you walk in here, this is the donor wall with lots of names. If you want to see your name on the donor wall and there's a lot of room for, for names on it. So with that, thank you so much, everybody, and it's just been such a pleasure, not only working with city, the council members, but to work with the public and the donors, so thank you.
Thanks, Deborah Harnett, and I'm a little expert and, um, my background is architecture and design. It's 50 years, whether or not, and I think the plan is great and I've looked over it and I'm feeling, I'm excited about. There's just one flaw that I'd like to point out. And that's that the front door and the back door are completely off of each other and it's when that happens, the energy moves in and out too fast. And if you offset them, you can keep the walkways the way they are, if you offset the front door and the back door. The energy will stay within and then the people that work at the station, the library and does not build up energy moving back and forth. And the, and the, and the back door. That's what I'm just saying. Thank you so much.
Hi, Kristen Naraya from Larkspur and Pergamadera. Um, I had a quick question actually for Nathan, and you, you showed the landscape plan. I just want to confirm that the Sycamore is along the north side of the lot that, that are, um, lining. Uh, Doherty here are not being impacted.
Yeah, there, those are existing.
For the record, all trees are German, just so that we didn't.
Hi, I'm Laura Lovett. I live on North Plaza Drive, right across from this new library. Um, I am also working. The marine chapter of the California Native Land Society and I've been public gardening in Larkspur since B16, so. Don't know, but they have a free consultant. Um, you know, what goes here, what doesn't, that's why the hot site, we are brought to them. That it was specified for habitat, it really has to be habitat, it can't be just. Which is in dots on the go and we can. Gather money and support and pay for some of those improvements as long as it's really habitat. Uh, what we have now, the planning plan is staged, it's not really habitat and four or five trees are not native. So we need to revisit things, um, like I said, we can help come up with some, like, we'd like to do a children's garden, for instance, right off the children's reading room. Uh, maybe we can play, pay for, but we need to know what's evolving on your side of it because we haven't been invited. As far as the specific, specific things that are being discussed. Um, the grading plan concerns me. I don't know why we're, we're taking three inches of soil off the entire site right off the bat and why we're hauling away so much soil, but. The beds, the landscaping beds can be raised. In fact, they're much better if they're raised and it keeps them out of the toxic soil that is the nursery site. So we can make swales, the, the water will flow better, it will drain better, the plants will have room to root. You know, don't carry the dirt away. If we can help it, that's not what we want to be doing. Um, somebody mentioned, how do you seeding the habitat area? If you do that, you're gonna, the minute you water it, you're gonna. Um, the 30 year old seed bank that's in that dirty soil is all the mess around, so you are just going to end up with a weed patch. So we recommend, um, something from. Um, Delta Bluegrass, which is bio filtration sod and it goes down as sod and it's all native grasses and it will. Keep everything from eroding and until sort of more. Complex plans can be decided. Um, and then we also want to let you know that the New Plant Society offers free training for staff. Um, public work staff, we like to encourage everybody in Larkspur to take it. And learn how to take care of this garden because it's going to be lower water, more beautiful and lower maintenance if it's done right.
Thank you very much for your comments. It's two minutes and if we can put them in touch with you and. It sounds like there's a lot, it's a great offer to help there. That would be great.
Yeah, yeah, my contact information should be on the notice or we.
Hi, uh, my name is Gillian Schultz and I'm a Larkspur resident. And I'm speaking on behalf of the 30 members of the Larkspur Climate Group, all of whom live in Larkspur or Green Bay. And I'm going to try to skip through some of this because it has been covered, but I didn't write this, so I'm trying to like, I got called in at the last minute. Um, so my comments this evening reflect the written comments we have submitted separately and focus on two themes, community and sustainability. The reason the site was preserved was to become a community gathering place, a commons. And it presents a one time opportunity to provide Larkspur with a non-commercial gathering place for residents of all ages and interests. And designed to reflect that. Um, we are in a critical time of transition away from fossil fuels to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that are driving our working climate crisis. And the Larkspur's 2021 Climate Action Plan sets out specific greenhouse gas production goals. Commits Larkspur to take actions to substantially reduce our community's greenhouse gas emissions. The design of the new library should reflect this commitment and it's great to see that it's, uh, mostly electric, but there's still some stuff to do. To make it a model of sustainability consistent with the Climate Action Plan. So I'm going to go over five specific comments which were developed by members of the Larkspur Climate Group who are energy engineers, landscape architects, construction managers, transportation planners, civil engineers and urban planners. And, uh, the point is that these reflect some considerable professional expertise. Um, the first three comments are about the building itself. Um, it's missing two key sustainability features, we're talking solar and battery storage. I think we've already addressed that, so I'm gonna skip that part. Um, the second comment is the proposed building's clear story windows should be operable and motorized to couple, and coupled with low level venting to prevent natural ventilation and heat flushing. And that will make the building more comfortable and reduce heating load and costs. And then the third comment is about the, uh, gas powered backup generator. Um, we argue that it should be eliminated because it is at odds with the greenhouse gas emissions. Um, but I think we've also already discussed that. The final two comments are related to the proposed transportation infrastructure. These are related to the, um, location of the parking lot. Um, the best part of the site is that it's centered with its greater distance from traffic and iconic views of King Mountain and Mount Tam. And the proposed design parks on the heels of this premier or premium location. Um, the heart of the site should be in the common space for residents to sit, walk and talk while saving separated from traffic vehicles. And this was shown in the, the plan that was reviewed by the city council in December 23. Um, you have to talk about that, but I'm just gonna make that point. Our group would like to see the parking lot moved. The proposed site development should also include enhanced level two E V and E V R charging infrastructure, and I think you also already addressed that, so. I will skip that part, so I'm glad I don't need my six minutes. Um, uh, and I'd like to note that in the written comments, we provided support, we provide supporting graphics in the list of secondary comments. We'd like the planning council or commission to also consider as design review. And in conclusion, the members of the Larkspur Climate Group are excited to see the new library moving ahead. It's a key feature of the Larkspur Commons and request that the planning mission prescribe change to this design to reflect our comments and recommendations.
Hi, everyone. John Lubomirski, a long time resident of Larkspur. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. As a longtime resident, a former member of the Larkspur Library Foundation Board and a former mayor and a planning commissioner. Um, the library is close to my heart. Um, I'm grateful to the Commons Foundation, donors, staff, volunteers and everyone who has brought the project to this point. And a comment about funding, um, I was pleased to be district representative for Assembly Member Mark Levine. When he arranged a billion dollar grant for this project and I hope that can be remembered as well. Um, I am concerned about the design being different from what was publicized before. I understand development. I understand fundraising. I've done it. But I think that's something that the planning mission might want to be. Sensitive about and, and see what the, what the community feels about this more contemporary hard edge design. However, um. It has been mentioned in public meetings that there is a potential for city hall to be gutted. And everything inside torn out and the building to be rented to a private entity and Larkspur government functions would be moved to the Rose Lane Library Site. That topic will be discussed tomorrow at the city council and heritage joint meeting. It, the meeting will be on Zoom, so the public can watch it and testify actually if they want to offer that. I think. I think I, I, I'm. It, it's good that this isn't part of this discussion because it's a separate issue. But I think it's something to sort of keep, keep in our minds. And again, thank you for everybody who's moved the project to this.
Good evening. Ted, my name is Ted Wharton, um, Larkspur resident since nineteen ninety-five. My comments, uh, pretty quickly and it echoes Commissioner Chalmers' comment. The Larkspur Commons concept that was in the December twenty-three, uh, city staff report. Was a library framing a green, peaceful, community outdoor room. The designer use of it all has paved over this commons location, which is the best location on the site. The other, uh, is the other, uh, item that I wanted to get into was, uh. The, the was looking hard at the gas generator. I put gas generators in. They're really hard to keep quiet. This is relatively close to somebody's house. Um, you've just got to be very careful as you move forward with the generator. But I want to thank you again for your time, effort and insights in making this public library. A key part of what makes Larkspur such a delightful place to live, work and read. Thank you.
I'm Edward Tishburn and I live in Heather Gardens and I'm site planning. And I've escaped architecture throughout my career. And, um, I have a few comments I would like to ask if you could put on the site plan. On, upon any tweet about screening again that was there. I'm not for just, yeah, thank you so much. You could go back to that site there. Okay, thank you. So, you know, overall, I think, you know, it looks great. A lot of, you know, nice things about this. This direction, the building itself, you know, it doesn't mind me that it's a little bit askew. It's kind of interesting. But I just want to point out a few things if you're gonna go with a site plan like this or similar to this, that I would like to write now. This, if you could hold the microphone with you so we can pick up your comments. Thank you, thank you. Um, you know, it'd be nice to have a green common area. Or a city center and then to have a livable area where it's walkable. So, you know, this part of the site, right in here. And all through here, and here has tremendous views of Mount Temple Pious. There's, uh, redwood trees coming from this corner. So it's, and it's okay that the building's set site there. But I wouldn't want to lose that opportunity to have that for the community. These wonderful views there. So maybe it's outdoor space in the future. We get funds could grow out into over here. Yeah, or if you did another phase out into here. But if you eventually move the, uh, planning department and other services into here. You know, kind of, uh, the, the nicest space for the common area will be primarily parking. Um, so I'd just like to say if you could please move, you know. Grow out of here and be here. And then I'd like to see accessibility for the community. Eventually come through the ecological zone, come to this area to pick up pedestrians here. So they have a really nice pedestrian bike experience into the area. Um, and then this corner is really super too, because it connects with downtown.
Sorry, I give only regional two minutes.
Okay, downtown and I'd like to keep that there. And the lighting, um, maybe you can screen that. That's the lighting with just a little cabin top, just little minor things. Um, and then maybe some wood siding siding building to match.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Matthew Hartzell. I'm a resident of Larkspur since nineteen eighty-four. And this is the plan that you've seen before you tonight. And as, uh, you can see, the center of the site is a parking lot. Parking important, but doesn't really belong in the center of the site, at the heart of this site. I want to show you this. Other image, which is actually the site plan that was approved by the city council in December twenty-twenty-three. And as you see, the parking lot is on the southern edge of the site. And the center, the heart of the site is reserved as the commons, which has always been a central and integral component to this. This, this community center and commons. And I've been following the conversations with the Commons Foundation and members of the Commons Foundation Board. And the original project architect, Scott Lockard. And this commons at the center of the site has always been very important and, and a, a community asset. And, um, do we really want to put a parking lot there? I've, I've heard that in the parking lot here means it's a little bit closer to the library and that's true. But it's really not that far away if you put the parking at the southern end of the site. It's a short distance that, um. The, a shorter walk from the parking lot to the library is not going to do anyone any harm. A little bit of walking is good. It's healthy. And, uh, I know that there's desire to expand the, I think, in the future, there's still room to expand on this end of the site if you do the parking in the south. Where are the premier views of Mount Temple Pious? They're from this line here in the center of the commons. Do we really want the premier views in a parking lot? And finally, my other comment is about the level two EV charging. I would strongly recommend that level three charging is in fact considered because level two charging is too slow. And there are many people that live in multi-tenant housing, we don't have charging and need factor charging. It is none in Larkspur. Thank you.
Sorry, I have to tie this up. We'll be fixing that here.
I'm Barbara Friday, um, also from Larkspur. I just wanted to make, uh, I just wanted to give some kudos to the architect shop, um, uh, Crystal and his staff. Because I took a, um, a field trip and went to the Capitola Library, which is a modern design. Um, very, with a lot of similarity to what we're, uh, going to be, the building. And it was, and I was there during the day. And I was able to see, you know, the open windows, the glass, um, various, uh, community members, groups, children, teens. Um, folks just quietly reading, all coexisting in a library that worked functionally very, very well at the same time. And it, and I talked to the staff and formally said about this, their modern library built in, uh, twenty-twenty-one. And asked them, what was it like to work in the library? And they were very, he said, it's delightful. We love, we love it. And the only thing that they had to say was, um, in some ways, what their community room was, was smaller. They were working, the site was a relatively small area. And it was, you know, built into the site to accommodate a, an existing park. And I, so I think they had, uh, you had perhaps some constraints as all buildings do. And, um, I, I know that we're addressing that with our community rooms. So I was, I was delighted to see Capitala. Can't wait for our own library to build, build, build. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Carrie Burrows from Larkspur and also one of the friends of the library board. And, you know, we just wanted to say we're thrilled with the design and, uh, where, where we're now here at this, this point. And, um, anyone, you should go and look at the architecture's website and just. Uh, it seems like hundreds of libraries that they've built, how great they are and what, you know, they're professionals and I know what they're doing. And the same with the, um, construction company. And so we're just so happy that the team is so strong and also that Damon, the librarian, has got so much great input into this building. The nuances of what's been going on in terms of tweaking it. And then it's great to have the new ideas for the landscape and with the native plants and all that. So anyway, we're just, um, super excited. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Bob Wood. I'm a, uh, resident of Larkspur. Could we have the site plan back up again, please? I'll be really brief because I think there's been some really good, um, input into the site plan itself. And that's my orientation as well. And I think the, the thing that is really important is a couple of things is. That I think it would have been much stronger. And I think it's really important to really include. The sustainability and the community resilience items. And I think it's real and expansion and the flexibility that the building and the site should have. For future development because. I'm still not quite sure what exactly is really within the budget and the constraints you have right now. And those other elements, especially, um, expansion, which could be done with just, you know. Another diagram that shows those things. And I think the thing that's important about that is those are all donor opportunities. Those are all opportunities for, um, community members to be a part of it. Um, in a significant way. And then the last thing is. What I want to say about the site planning is. I understand, um, native and, uh, planting and the ethos, you know, of all of that. But what I do want to say is, and this relates to sustainability and community, uh, resilience is. Trees, trees, trees and more trees. We need shade. We need shade to make those outdoor spaces really, um. An opportunity to really be useful. And I'll just make one quibble and then I'll.
Yes, you're free to comment. Thank you.
That the whole southern end. The whole southern end of the site is, or in the whole western end of the site is going to have to be really shady in the afternoon. The hottest part of the day here in Larkspur, which is really quite nice sometimes of the year. But is blistering other times of the year.
So we need shade otherwise. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, thanks.
It's home to Larkspur. The exterior design of this building is both stark and disappointing. It looks like the first cousin of the last library design, surrounded or deservedly panned by Larkspur citizens in twenty-fifteen. It has the same objectionable design features. It is angular, boxy, hard edged, sharp shoulders, sterile. A quasi-industrial structure. It doesn't just look nothing like what the library promoters pictures said it would look like. It looks like the exact opposite of those pictures, almost a big switch. After the last library design was panned, the city undertook a series of workshops to identify the quote, look and feel of Larkspur. For future design guidance. I see no evidence that any of the insights developed by that process are reflected here. This does not reflect the look and feel of Larkspur. This design violates applicable design requirements. And design review criteria B requires compatibility with the neighbors, but this clashes dramatically. With the judicial style of the surrounding neighborhood as well as the nearby police building. And it does not even echo the woodsy suburban commercial contemporary style of the shopping center. This design also violates specific plan chapter nine titled Commercial Community Character Policy D one. Which reads, quote, traditional design approaches. The overall approach to design shall reflect the traditional downtown neighborhood, end quote. Obviously, this doesn't. If you approve this design, Larkspur will have a better looking police building than a library building.
Ten seconds.
It will have, the Larkspur will have the least inviting, coldest library in Southern Marin, if not all Marin. Please send the design back to the drawing board like the lack of design, which this so clearly represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. Uh, I'm Andy Longell. Last fifteen years.
Speak into the mic, please.
Is it so? Okay. Yes. The last fifteen years of my career been putting solar on affordable houses. And I have, uh, three comments and observation. The observation is as Dan said, um, division with division. And now, uh, go through the public process and just clearly that's starting now. It's not over. Um, I support the comments of the Larkspur Climate Group and a lot of other people. I think it was well thought out. Just to expand on that also, if we just step back sort of common sense, this mid-two thousand and twenties. Climate change is obvious. I think the overwhelming majority of Larkspur citizens, we would not really like to build a building that we have for a hundred years. It doesn't lean forward. And this building in a few respects leans back, um, like the diesel. Um, also, a lot of, the second point is a lot of sustainability measures, um, that just make sense. They're good investments. I know very well about solar. We're MCE right now. Small car shows forty-one cents per kilowatt hour. Those are outrageously high prices. We put solar on. I sell solar to affordable housing. People have no money because it's worth it. They save money. So it's an investment. You also have the option of there are companies out there who will build it for you and own it. You can buy it up from them in twenty years. It costs nothing. Um, some of the other things were mentioned like the cut and fill. If you balance the site, you not only have a lot of stuff, uh, more sustainable, the site's now a foot higher or something. Um, so that would improve the flood resiliency. Um, the generator, Dan, I think you should stand up in front of the council, say, this will be resiliency center. And the best deal for that is going to be within the next two years. We have a police station. If there's a big thing that happens tomorrow, that has lots of power. Batteries are available. As Julian said, they're becoming, they're rapidly going down in price and improving quality. New generations of batteries coming out all the time with the Inflation Reduction Act. There's all kinds of options available. We can find a place.
Excellent.
Um, and the third thing is just the long-term investment. Like Joan said, we have to think about this really long term. I think a lot of the site plan doesn't do that. Everyone's talking about the parking, but in particular, this access in the next twenty years, certainly not fifty, this is going to be redeveloped. This is the view to Mount Tam. It's the access up to the Lark Theater. It's incredibly important. Point in the city of Larkspur.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Molly White. I'm a Larkspur resident. I also served on the NIVOD committee in the last century. And the only thing I would really like to say, having listened to all the communication tonight, is I think there've been a lot of good points made. I think the thing that's nice to see about this design is it has not been designed by committee. I think when you design by committee, you get really mushy, suburban, uninspired buildings. And I was relieved to see the building that came out today. Um, you know, we've gone over and visited the new library in Tiburon. There's some really beautiful contemporary libraries out there that are fit for purpose and forward-looking. What I don't want to see in Larkspur is Walnut Creek and I don't want to see something that could be anywhere. And I'm not suggesting that this building is unique to Larkspur, but I think it has, um, architectural legs that work in this community. And so I was actually, I just want to put in a strong vote for the kind of design that's coming forward instead of reference back to, uh, watercolor that was on the brochure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Phil Cherry. I, uh, I've been here for fifty-eight years now. And, uh, July of nineteen seventy-three, I became a lobbyist for a new library because I could see the obvious need. What I want to do is tell you, this is the best meeting I've been to in a long time because I look out of the crowd. I know so many of those people. And I'm so happy to thank them for their continued efforts to put Larkspur in the library. Thank you.
My name is, my name is Dana Swisher. My, uh, you hear me? Sorry, my head's a jerry switcher, so. This, to be transparent. Um, I'm a thirty-year resident of, of Larkspur. I've been a teacher at Nunces on Montry School for twenty years. And more recently, I am the founder and director of Refugia Marin. A nonprofit organization dedicated to identifying our public spaces with. A nonprofit organization dedicated to identifying our public spaces with native plants that increase biodiversity. We're very encouraged by the inclusion of native plants in um, in your landscape planning. And um, we just urge you to um, consider using more keystone, trees and plants. In the landscape and are um, thrilled that the underdeveloped area is studying for habitat. Riki Jimarin actually was recently awarded a um, grant from um, Grant to the Landscape, the front of Palm Middle School with native plants to increase biodiversity. So we're extremely excited about the native plants that you're using, um, because it just increases our habitat core, habitat border that we have in Larkspur. So. Good on you.
Thank you.
I didn't do that.
I'm Tom Flynn, uh, resident of Larkspur for over thirty five years. I'm an environmental president and uh, part of the Limer, Larkspur Climate Group and uh, other community efforts. Uh, I've also been working the past uh, few years on the African West for him with um, Green County Fire Department. Shoreline School District, uh, Supervising Development, Bring Clean Energy, now M C E P G, and other key organizations to build. Solar microbids in West Marin. And batteries are a great addition to solar, uh, essentially solar microbids. Provide an additional level of energy management to solar batteries. Uh, for example, solar microsystems integrate. Info on upcoming outages and uh, use historical weather data. Where the forecast information to determine when solar availability will be low due to oncoming stormy days. Preparation for those conditions, uh, the microgrid controller automatically shuts off. Less vertical surfaces or essentially works on specific zones, so zones can be prioritized. You may not always want to keep the entire building. Uh, a cooling center may be more practical to keep proportionate. And so essentially, uh, properly solar sized microgrid can potentially provide resiliency for those critical services indefinitely. If there's a major disaster, such as an earthquake, which knocks out gas lines, bridges, roads, disrupts diesel supply for days or weeks. Overall, solar microbids, a good investment, optimizing in terms of resilient technology and farming benefits. Essentially, they're, they're forward looking additional step to consider.
Ten seconds.
Looking forward, makes sense. Also, it's good to look back. Uh, the library site has been identified by archaeologists as a significant coastal weakness. Some consideration of that should be taken in my future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Brock Wagstaff. I'm usually sitting up there with those guys. And I know that Ash is uh, two minute, is two minutes, so I'm going to be real quick. Um, I think uh. I'm, I'm also on the uh, Commons Foundation Board, and I was involved with the selection committee to. The architects. And um, I can tell you, I am.
If you can speak into the mic a little bit.
Sorry, um, I'm so glad uh, that this is not the building that appeared on the brochure. So. In any case, uh, kudos to the uh, Commons Foundation and for all the fundraising and uh. I, I think there are some questions I would have relative to where the parking goes. In terms of future uh, building use or additional buildings, but I like this going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? One more?
Yes, and I want to say from here, can everyone hear me?
You know, unfortunately, it's not picked up by the microphone, so that's thank you for taking.
I'm. You introduce my name is Morris Spardon. I live in Larkspur. I've only lived here eight years. So I can't claim to have all the expertise that you have. You know, we moved here, I have to tell you. All the benefits, but I'm in a very good friend of a woman uh, in the library. She is now deceased. Uh, but uh, we became very determined. Because we both had, you know, issues, uh, challenges. Um, and she, she said, I said, oh, here's going to be a new library. She says, it will never happen. They can never agree on anything. My husband sat on the board or he was a mayor years ago. She said, maybe it's never going to happen. When I came to this meeting today at our, this encouragement, I thought, I saw this and I thought, oh my God, it's happening. To live to see it. So. I know, oh, this decided, I said, you know, let's make this real, make this happen. I don't want to die. Now everyone's seeing the. I'm going to go to my friend and tell her when I get there.
Alright, maybe we can close on that from there. Um. So we'll bring it back to the nation. We do have some follow up questions based on the comments we had tonight, so.
Yeah, so I, I always wanted to follow up on the comment about moving potentially city offices to the recycling site and if there's any. Um, intention of, of where those might go or spaces they might occupy, sort of guiding. Spatial of the parking lot.
Uh, the council voted emphatically, well, I don't say emphatically because it was slipped up, they voted. That city offices would remain a four hundred diagonal avenue. For staff, that was the end of this discussion.
I'm not sure. Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, so I guess the next question is, is relating to some of the comments that we heard and some of the questions that I had reviewing the plans about the parking lot. Covered that. On a, the staff felt that, texted me, felt uh. Are you sort of along, walk to the, to the library? Um, I, I guess I'm just wondering, um, it does seem like that's sort of a, a community space that, that. Might make for potential future, uh, an easier potential future expansion of the library in, uh, instead of sort of an L shape. Expanding into, so I guess um. I'm just, I'm just, I guess curious to hear thoughts on that or maybe commissioner's side. Follow up on that. Seems like that would be. Expansion of the library.
Maybe to ask the question in slightly different ways, if. The, I guess, public area was not, was where the current parking area is, let's say that was changed. Can you still, or how would you then handle the ten thousand square foot expansion requirement? That sounds like that was something that was built in as a condition. And how would you address accessibility? Because that seems that that was a driving reason as to why you moved the parking to the center.
Um, I'm going to go first and maybe frame this a little differently, because. The council has never moved any design for this building. And I just want to be clear about that. Whatever it keeps referring to from December is the bid that. Nolan Tam as the architects underneath Alton Construction, who's actually who this contract is with. Submitted to show an idea, their idea, without any input from anyone on staff, then about any. Discussion of those competing interests that I talked about. And there's a lot of competing interests when you build a public. Project. So this was Nolan Tam saying, blank slate, we really would like this business and we'll work with all, all constructions. Here's a, here's a picture of what we think it would be. That's not a proposal. The council in no way endorsed that document as what we're going to build. I just want to be clear about that. You're the designer of you folks, actually, not the council. That's why we're here tonight. Um, so I think Nolan Tam had an inspired idea that maybe a lawn in the center of the property would be a great gallery space. I don't disagree with that. But I know that my role on the team was to keep reminding. Julian and his team, what we had heard over multiple iterations of. Meetings with our council, our committee, meetings with the Commons Foundation, meetings with stakeholders. And you have to take into account accessibility matters a lot in this community. Don't discount it. Really easy to say, I'm comfortable walking that extra distance, but I can tell you of a lot of. Really important people in this community that that's a difficult thing to do. And they need their car to be as close to the V to that front door. So that's something to not take for granted. We have a neighborhood, and we made sure, you know. It's, it, you know, it's challenging to put a public project in a residential neighborhood. I see Julie's over there and she knows because we're having some conversations about it. Make this all work and try to be good neighbors. Um. You have to be thoughtful where you put a parking lot, because there's somebody's living room not that far away. You don't really want to put a parking lot. And people who live in that residential neighborhood have to deal with the lights coming on in a car and beaming right into their living room window. Um, so we had to be sensitive to these sorts of things. So it's, it's easier play planner, and I'm not discounting when a lot of comes out here, but. A little faith or process that a lot of stakeholders came and said, this is important to me too. And we're trying to balance all those competing. Interests. And that's sort of how you end up with the parking lot where it is. Now, I will say, I, I'm a stakeholder too on behalf of the city, and I went into this project saying. I only have a small maintenance crew with so much budget and big lawns are expensive to maintain. And they actually run foul of water policy in the county. They run afoul of parts of our own sustainability and climate action plans to build new lawns. So. We had to think about all of this stuff as we're going through to try to make it all work. Uh, and then folks who haven't done with this a long time will remember, we had big arguments about where the driveway should be to the property. And we had to have a traffic engineer dial it down. I heard a couple of comments, wouldn't it be nice to have some access on market? Well, that's not fair to that neighborhood. And we're trying to be thoughtful about that. And we've been told by traffic engineers that entering the prop and door is a bad idea for a whole of those few reasons. So. We end up with driveway where it is, and that's starting to drive some of that thought process too, of how, how is the parking lot? Uh, and then lastly, I'll just say, I know Hardscape's not as nice as Crass, but you can have an event in Hardscape. There's nothing says that we can't close parking lot for an event once in a while. Uh, now I'll make sure that my good friend, who knows all the technical details, if she has anything to add to my rant, so.
Um, not much, um, other than as, as the city manager alluded to in one of the latter comments, the. Based on where the driveway is, this is the most efficient way to lay out the parking lot. You don't need that long access road that you're not part of the property to get to the back. So this is. The most efficient and it keeps the parking as close to the driveway as possible, at least. As much of the rest of the site um, as possible for future, uh, whatever we, else we want to do with the site. But it's just the best. Overall efficient and, but really I will say the driving factor was we heard over and over. Accessibility, um, you know, one of the big improvements that we wanted to make in this new library versus the building we have now. We've got a blank slate. We've got an opportunity to make accessibility, um, you know, as, the. Project as accessible as, as possible for, for folks that have challenges in those areas. So. And they did, accessibility was really the driving force, uh, getting that parking lot closest to the building. But um, on the other side, it also does. Actually lead to the most flexibility for, for the site layout.
Yeah, I mean, when I initially looked at it, um, I was a little bit chagrined out, to be honest, um, to see the parking space there, but. Listening, this is what's great about meetings like this, listening to your reasonings and everything. Also, as far as putting sustainable gardens in here, and I do know a lot about that. The, the place could only be the most, made the most sense is the layout that you have now. If that would be a wonderful natural landscape, rest in the common area, we see. You're right, it is expected to maintain center there. So I, I think you guys are. As far as, as far as Mr. Most comment, um. I am a traditionalist as well, and I really do like that. Building, but this is a beautiful building. Your size, it really is nice, it's new, it's interesting. I mean, this is Robert N W Y. That, that's what it is. And it's a little bit of staggered. But, but that's my big one. And I think that's where this design came, because people. But it's not a wire.
Actually, I have to um, get back to, I'm just trying to understand it all of this before we move on. If the lucky site, in the event, and maybe this is more for Alex, in the event, the lucky site gets developed at some point in the future. And a taller building, a good building goes in there. How does that impact the library? Does that block any view of Mount Ham? Does that, I mean, does it make sense? That, is there any impact on that? Because there's a parking lot in the middle and that's where you see Mount Ham and then you've got Lucky's on the other side of it.
Sure, I, I don't really have an answer for you because there is no proposal for development there. It could take a lot of different shapes. Um, but generally, the height limit there, I think is forty feet under the, the objective design standards, which. I don't believe would result in completely blocking the view of Mount Ham, affecting without a project in front of.
Yeah, maybe we just edit out until I can, okay. I just have some small questions based on what I heard tonight. Um, what, what about this offsetting of the doors? Is that a, a confidence? Or is that, I, I'm not, I'm not an architect, I don't know, no, I'm not an engineer.
Um, take a look at it, but I think, you know, we've kind of set the plan pretty well. And I think it would be a minor inconvenience, um, if they, if they.
Okay. And then, um, is three, was it three inches of soil removal, briefly? Or was it, I, I'm just curious about that. Does that have to be removed? And, and especially if we were talking about heights in terms of flooding in the future.
Yeah, so in, in some places it will be and it'll be necessary, because if you've been out on the site, in a lot of places, the top three inches is pure rock. It just, it has to get removed. And then there's a certain amount of um, grading that will have to occur to make sure the site drains. Properly. All in all, it's a pretty flat site and it's going to end up being a pretty flat site when we're done. I think, um, there was some preliminary grading that was done based on the first table where the parking lot would be and how everything would grade out. And I think the. The number on what prompted the, the grading permit was that they anticipated pulling out about a thousand yards of material out of the site. Um, I think we've chatted about that since and based on where now we're going to go to the next level of landscape design, we're going to look at some of those berms a little bit more. And I. Think there's definitely room to take that grading material that's going to be generated from some of the areas outside and keep it on site and create some of those. Those, I'm sure the contractor would much rather move the dirt from one side of the site to the other than hauling it somewhere. So. Yeah, I think we'll have full cooperation that we won't have the vast extent of grading that's in the quantities.
Thank you. And then, um, there are a lot of questions on the landscaping and the native plants habitat. So just, sorry, I understand. What is the process on that? What, how is that going to be addressed? Because it's, my understanding is we don't have the budget against landscaping and it's got to go before city council. So just help me understand how that's going to work.
Right. So what we tasked our um, landscape architects with was we have a vision of what we'd like landscaping to be at this property based on. Some community feedback that we got with biodiversity, native plants, trees for shade, because we said we wanted to have some outdoor space. Um, but when we were putting the budget together for the project and we looked like we were a little bit short, and there were potentially some more fundraising activities that were coming along. We identified that, um, you know, we, we have the rent for the building, we have to put the walls in, we have to put a roof on the building. Landscaping is one of those things that we can probably come back and finish later if we don't get there budget wise. So. What we said to the design team was, let's first come up with a, with a palette. So we've got this feedback from the community on the kind of plants they want. Let's put a palette. Together. And as we see where the funding is, we'll start to put those plants in certain areas of what really further develop the planting plan. From what I understand, the Commons Foundation is continuing to do a great job raising funds. So I think you will start to see those land. I think you will start to see those landscape plans get developed a little bit further as, you know, we have more certainty on on the funding. And that's one of the things we'll be talking with the city council on in the meeting in October when we're talking about these enhancements. So additional landscape and additional trees I heard come up that was unidentified landscaping enhancement that the team put in their proposal. So this is what it would cost to do this, a habitat garden. That's already, those numbers are already built in. And so we'll look at the budget. And then when we know we have those funds, then we'll have our landscape architect will further develop the plans and you know, we're we're, if people have comments based on their experience with what works and what doesn't, then I'll let her I an email and we'll send it to the team for their information as they're putting the plans together.
Thank you. And then the only other thing that came up, I totally agree, was with shading on the west side. I know the sun can be really strong and I don't know if that's on by trees or that by the building.
So for for the west side of the building, there is a shade structure that comes out from the edge of the building that will not only provide some shade to the outdoor space, but it also serves to shade the sun from getting through the windows and heating the inside space. And then once you get out into the landscape area, there's where the little curved bench would be, there's almost there's some level of a berm there and it's going to have some landscaping and some trees. And again, the more funding we get, the more trees and the more shady it is over there. But yeah, there's definitely an acknowledgement that's a place where we think folks are going to spend some time. And so there's a shading need at that end.
Thank you. So we, I we just want you to make a statement of what is the commission of that position.
I'm Cameron Hall and I need to acknowledge for the record that I am an uncompensated member of the Commons Foundation. And that I provide the Commons Foundation with provo tax and accounting services. I am participating in the hearing today in my role as president of the planning commission. And I base my assessment on the interest of the city and what I hear in the
Thank you. So I'm going to close any comments and questions now. We're just going to discuss it.
Well, I was just going to say this has been a great discussion. Thank you. I learned a lot and I think that the comments were impressive. Wish people could have more time to talk, but obviously would not have a meeting. That would not go till midnight if you did. So I guess, I like I say, I really like this plan. I like the, I like the fact that it takes into account a lot of the issues that people wanted in a library and a community center. I do think we do need to think about the native planting and making sure that the landscaping is right. And I would encourage you to to look at Ms. Lovett and her Native Plant Society and like, I mean, I'll put a plug in for Refugia. We're in, which is a tremendous organization, nonprofit that does this kind of thing. And there are many projects in Harsburg that you can go look at to see what that kind of idea is. The issue of the solar, the generator, this is stuff which is your job and you'll figure that out. I understand why you want to put in a diesel and or a gas generator, but obviously as the gentleman mentioned, as costs come down and capacity goes up, I hope that we have the ability to incorporate that as more of a source of energy. But I understand why for emergencies, et cetera. I mean, in the hospital, we have the same thing. We have a double generator system. The most generator breaks down. We need to have a backup as well. So that's pretty much it. I think I'm very much in approval of what I've seen tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Sure, yeah. So I I guess I first want to say I I like the design. I think it it seems like it works and it addresses a lot of the the needs of the community. As outlined over the last ten or fifteen years, that this process has been going on. So I I I do appreciate that. And when I first reviewed the plan, I I had, and you know, read some of the initial comments that we got. I had I had some questions. I I feel like those have been addressed. I have some questions about the location of the parking lot. Sounds like I have some questions about the the gas generator, you know. I'm, I I think that you guys have done a good job of explaining why those are the way that they are. Coming back to our our three action items today, I think design review, I I think it's a, it's good design. I'm excited for Lars for having a new library. And I think that its base design is largely based on and the the grading permit, I'm pleased to hear that there's possibility of leaving some of that material on site. But it's grading is a necessary part of construction. So and then the fence side exception, also pleased to hear that a sidewalk was done with the affected neighbors. That would be favor, but if they are so those
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. So I would agree. And certainly the understanding of the the outside space. I know that we're mostly but I think the building is a really capable building. The old plans and what was presented in December are also nice, but I'm working with guys who created inside it. Look forward to seeing what is able to be accomplished in the concept. And, you know, with planting, et cetera, and future extensions, if they happen. But I don't have any issues. I would, I would invite these for time review. I don't have any issues with fence height section, but the grading, I guess, I'm now confused. Do we still need to talk about the grading? Is that going to change or?
No, so the grading permit is still required because the quantity of earth that is going to be moved is above the threshold. But the only difference will be instead of moving it off site, it will be redistributed off site. But the actual amount of earth that's being moved will stay the same.
Yeah, thank you. I asked a lot of questions. So I wanted to say thank you for taking the time to answer all the questions. I I think you kind of figured out that I was one of the people that hadn't really seen the design before. So I was surprised at the modern design. And the more I looked into it, the more I understood it, the more I really liked it. So I think I'm really on foot with this design. I want to, again, I wanted to reiterate, Commissioner Swisher commented about, please, I really want to encourage you to do a lot with the landscaping, which probably means raise a lot of money. Lots of trees. I really like to encourage that. And also all the discussions we have on the solar, the batteries and the EV. I don't think I need to reiterate that here. I think we discussed what was requested. And also if you can work with some of the organizations that were here tonight, there were a couple of nonprofits that were here that I think could provide some support. And then, yeah, I think to reiterate Commissioner Campbell's comments, I mean, you you addressed the design review, bringing permanent fence and exceptions and reasons why really well in agreement with everything you said on that. And I just, I suppose, is the grading permit, I don't know if you need to reference redistribution at all. No, okay. That case, we should be able to make a motion. So
I'll make a motion that we approve the application DR MHE G R A D. Number twenty four zero three seven is proposed. And we approved the design review to construct the eighty nine seventy square block one story community building. And currently underdeveloped parcel, that we approved the grading permit to move sixteen hundred cubic yards. And we approve the found site exception.
If if I could interject here as a part of your motion, if you could also find the project exempt from further sequel analysis.
I also, as part of my motion, find the project exempt from further sequel analysis under sequel.
One motion is okay. Can we have a second, please?
I, yes, number Campbell, yes. Number Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Swisher, yes. And Chair Chong. Motion passes to four zero.
Thank you. And then can you address the ten day?
Yes, there is a ten day period for the approval. We would end your next Friday at one seven.
Thank you very much.
I could just, for the benefit, because we have a lot of folks that are interested in the landscaping and interested in the sustainability features. The council has moved its normally scheduled meeting, which would be October second, then moved October first to recognize the Rosh Hashanah. Holiday starts on October second. So for those who are interested, please note that. And we encourage you to participate at the October first meeting because that's where that part of this discussion will continue.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move on. Our meeting is not over yet. Are there any public comments on matters not on the agenda? Can I say that? Can you please have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn. I'll say it.